I would like to call the December 4th, 2018 City Council Study Session to Order. We have two main items of discussion. One has to do with the Kimley-Horn Parking Study, and one has to do with the Transportation Bond. And at this time, we have two guests. One is Leslie Tabor. We all know Leslie. She has worked on a number of projects. And we also have Dennis Burns from Kimley-Horn. And they will be doing our presentation this evening on the Parking Strategic Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and guests. Thank you very much. We are here this evening to present to you the Parking Strategic Plan and the Final Report. Jumping right in, a reminder of what a Parking Strategic Plan is, what its goals are. I know this is a hot topic, parking in Norman. My favorite joke is that it's the second most favorite topic to OU Sports in this area. So, very, very of interest for people in the community. A Parking Strategic Plan is a guide for decision-makers on things like governance, technology, enforcement, planning, and asset management. It is a strategic document. It's not an operations manual. The main objectives is to give decision-makers such as yourselves and the county commissioners options on how to best manage parking, not only in downtown Norman and the county complex area, but in the study area that this report addressed, which is the same area as the Jacob Study from 2016, with some additional sites that were pointed out from stakeholders such as EDAB members. There are also things that it touches on, like public perceptions of parking, which, you know, you want your constituents to think well of the city and the parking solutions that it offers, contributions to economic development that are always close to our heart, encouraging turnover and the contributions that that gives to the community, integrating technology as we're always looking to the future, and then also the possibility for scalability for growth in the future to eventually be multimodal, to include things perhaps like bus transit. So, things to keep in mind. Also, potential synergies with other partners as the program grows. Thank you for the wonderful introduction, Mayor Miller. Again, we have Kimley-Horn. We have Dennis Burns here. He is a leading national expert on parking with over 30 years of experience. He's currently a Vice President with Kimley-Horn. In my opinion, probably the best you're going to find. And then I am, have been your contract administrator. So, I serve both the city and the county in administering this contract, and I also help serve this local presence on this. A little bit about the process and the stakeholders that we've engaged. We know that you, as council, are very, very busy, and so that you have boards and commissions to help inform and make recommendations. So, again, this contract for the Parking Strategic Plan is between the city and the county. I think everyone was very optimistic about getting our arms around the study area and understanding that the best solution involves the parties at the table and finding something that works for everyone. The process has included updates to and feedback from both the city and the county through the county commissioners. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Stacy here tonight. City staff, Public Works Director Sean O'Leary, and Angela Lombardo in particular have been helpful. The Economic Development Advisory Board for the city, Chair Chuck Thompson is here tonight. And then also, a group that helped steer the Jacob Study from 2016. And that group includes Jim Adair, who's here tonight, other people such as Rainey Powell, who was present at the commissioners' meeting yesterday, and various other community leaders. So, thank you for their time. Additional stakeholders are the Downtowners Association, we all know and love them, the Campus Corner Merchants Association, and then also area business owners. So, the final report, which has been transmitted to you electronically and in deference to the Tree Board, was not printed out tonight, includes eight sections, which you can read at your leisure and review as you will. I will point out the executive summary, which is Section 1. There's also a standalone executive summary that gives you a bird's eye view of the complete report. Existing conditions, again, to highlight, the study area, much of it is the same as the Jacob Study from 2016. The parking was assessed and reviewed by Kimley-Horn, the spaces, the data, the recommendations. Many of these things were of special note to the EDAB, so we made sure that that feedback was given to Kimley-Horn so that they could review it closely. Other things such as surface lots, areas for potential garage development was added, but the study area is the same. There were nine key findings. And again, these, for people who are not avid parking fans, they get a little deep into it, but they're very important to point out. I like to highlight especially the first one, which is a sense of purpose and direction relative to parking and transportation policy, and the fact that the plan provides these elements. So, again, when you are working with multiple parties who serve diverse constituents, an important thing is to know why you're doing it, what is the point, what is the value to our community, how are we making this sustainable, and how do we agree around the table to organize this thing, to implement it, to shake hands and move forward, and we'll figure all the other stuff out. So, I thought that was really important to highlight. It also gives recommendations in terms of hiring a strong leader, figuring out where the money should go, investing in technology, finding potential synergies with people such as the University of Oklahoma. And then, number nine, which I've already referenced, the eventual growth to be multimodal. The main event, which may be of special interest to you, is the recommended management structure. I think going into this, many people thought there were lots of phrases being thrown around, like multi-jurisdictional parking authority, vertical integration, lots of ideas about what the possible solution could be. So, we wanted to make sure that Kimley-Horn provided lots of options, an ideal option, and then, you know, always a Plan B. You have to have a Plan B. But, the ideal option coming out of their study is a combination of the professional services or outsourced management model plus the parking district or commission model. Sort of a visual of that, the three layers. The parking commission would provide oversight. The parking director would be the actual staff. And then, an outsourced parking firm via contract would provide the actual parking management expertise. Their, Kimley-Horn's recommendation is at least for the first three years. Justifications for that model include a lean staff. I think we all have limited resources. We know that our governments do as well. So, you don't want to have something that's too big or too small. You want it to be the right fit. Again, this model is scalable for growth and expansion. The size is reflective of the service area and the budget. And, again, acknowledging, not that the current parking that exists isn't doing a great job, but there's not significant, deep expansive parking knowledge that currently exists within the city or the county, and this would allow for that. Also, the district and commission model, we're used to that level of representation, and it would allow for representation from the different areas, the city, the county, and also the larger area that the county represents, as well as business interests. The initial startup, again, this recommendation calls for a management firm for the first one to three years. It would help make sure that it's successful from day one, and that we don't fall on our faces, which would not be great for anyone. It would have things that are very important, I think, for governance in terms of giving you recommendations, and also the know-how to provide reporting, data, statistics, surveys, policies, procedures, all of the things that I think immediately come to mind when you think about starting up a parking program management system from scratch. And an outside firm would help you do that and work collaboratively to do so. I would like to highlight a couple of things that are included in the final report that are added value. Kimley-Horn has identified 20 characteristics that they consider effective parking programs have, and they go into detail on those within the document. Again, there's such a unique opportunity here for the city of Norman and Cleveland County to build something from the ground up that doesn't come around every day. And so, to have expertise telling you how to build that is really invaluable. So, those are highlighted in the report. And then also, honing in on parking as an economic development strategy, how public governments coming together to form strong parking management can encourage private development, can continue the success of things like a Center City Form-Based Code Vision Project, a county master plan, how all of those things work together for the greater good, and also, again, encourage development so that our communities continue to thrive. The report does include 10 primary action items, which does touch on implementation. Again, this is a strategic document, but it does get into what are some next steps, adopting a vision and mission statement, establishing a parking program fund. One thing I do want to point out is neither this document, ADG or Kimley-Horn, can give decision-makers political will. It will take decisions to be made, legal teams to work things out, to actually create ordinances or agreements or whatever it will take to get the thing organized. These are implementation plans once those things are agreed upon. So, there's a lot of good work that lays ahead, but again, we have included implementation steps. It does get down into basic things such as reminding everyone involved that you have to invest in continual training and development. You have to look for synergies for partners like OU. And again, always thinking of sustainability and possible expansion for the future. I always like to point out some things that I think will be of interest to the people that I'm presenting to. You may already be asleep because it's parking, but there are interesting pieces, I promise. Parking in general, surface lots, on-street meters, and enforcement can provide revenue, but it has to be well-managed. So, I think that's something that is always sort of floating around. How do we capture and make this work for us? You know, there are always financial concerns that are usually number one, and the solution to that is a well-managed program. Consolidating things into a single fund, in Kimley-Horn's recommendation, is how you get there. There's a lot of stuff that has to be decided upon and worked out in terms of what different partners are comfortable with. But again, in general, the way to make it work is that you combine it all and put it into one fund. And that is obviously included in the report, and it is even as far as the executive summary.
I would like to clarify something on that point. The idea of putting all these basic parking functions in one place really gets to the heart of, parking garages tend not to pay for themselves. They're very expensive. You have to charge probably $150 to $250 per space per month to pay for operating maintenance, maintenance reserves, and debt service, if you have debt service. But, by combining on-street parking and surface lot parking and enforcement revenues and the garage revenues, you can eventually get to the point, and this is really the ultimate goal, of essentially creating a parking system that's self-supporting financially. And there are lots of communities that have pulled that off. It takes time, and it takes commitment, but once you have all, but if you separate the pieces up, generally you don't get that result. So, I just, that was the real point of that first bullet.
Thank you, Dennis. Another thing of note is, I know there is always conversation about parking garages, including the county's complex master plan. So, we wanted to pay special attention to costs. There are some included in the report. We know that the 2017 master plan had some numbers. This study has some numbers. And then, we also are aware that OU recently built a garage that was a little bit lower than those. So, we just like to remind people that things like retail facades, what amenities do you want inside of it, how many spaces, what is the current bid environment, what factors like tariffs are impacting costs, all those things go into parking garages. But, all in all, the numbers are pretty similar, so that was a good thing.
Councilmember Scott.
When you say amenities inside of it, what do you mean?
So, like retail space, if you want to build out to have coffee shops or restaurants or meeting space for staff or the public.
Or it could be higher floor-to-floor heights, or painting.
Higher than the facility, the parking garage? Or on the first floor, or a wrap?
Higher floor-to-flights make it seem more open and more secure, you know, brighter lights, painting the interior white. You know, those are all optional issues. If you put, you know, brick facade around the whole thing, that adds significant cost as well. So, there are lots, there's plain jane, and then there's enhanced.
Yeah, I noticed that OU parking garage, the new one they have down there, has a whole, like, office on the first floor. It's unusual. Well, I thought unusual.
There's lots of different configurations.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's actually kind of what the county is talking about, is having the parking on the upper floors and having retail coffee shops, offices.
Which is a really good thing, that activation of the street levels, a best practice in parking design.
Would those, would those coffee shops and everything already, and retail spaces already be, I guess, not booked, but would we already have people ready to fill those spots going into this?
It would be up to the owner of the garage to work on programming that space out as part of the design and process of getting the garage going. Also of note is, Kimley-Horn did provide some initial budget numbers. Again, these are estimates, you know, they're not exact because this doesn't exist, but they did put some pencil to paper and give you some idea of estimated net revenue, preliminary budget outlines. And the main gist of it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, is that initially, you could expect to see some losses, but because of the recommendations and the idea that putting everything together into one fund is what makes it pencil, you would eventually see some returns.
Well, actually, this, the third bullet about the first year operating result, that incorporates the capital cost for, I think, what a recommended 200 additional parking meters. And so, essentially, in year one, you would have that big expense. In year two, you would probably see most of that be in blacks.
Does it include financing? I mean, if you're having to pay for the garage?
Well, you could either, essentially, yes. So, the overall cost that we estimated, I think, included, you know, financing costs as well. But, the idea is that typically you can.
Add a parking garage that was paid for by another source, then you would.
So, most of this revenue is going to come from your existing programs plus the addition of 200 additional meters. So, that's the capital cost for those meters that we're really factoring in here. And then, the cost of a parking garage, you know, a county project, we're not quite sure, I'm not sure how they're planning to fund that. I mean, they may have cash reserves, or they'll just pay cash, or, but most places, you know, take a 30-year bond or something, or, you know, have a 30-year debt service or 20-year debt service to pay off. So, it just depends on, you know, which funding option they go with.
So, this, that loss would include debt service?
This does not really involve the parking garage at all. This is.
This is just for the parking meters. I'm sorry.
Yes. It's the bulk of the existing revenues that you have and through your parking enforcement program, plus the addition of 200 meters generates that revenue.
So, year one is the parking meters. Okay. Councilmember Hitman.
Where were the 200 new parking meters intended to be?
In the downtown core area, you know, probably Main Street and that general area, but around there.
So, the areas right now where there are not meters, like on Main Street, we would put in meters.
Yes.
But, we have right now code enforcement that goes around the right tickets.
Right.
If people are parking there.
They're just enforcing time limits right now.
I understand.
Yeah.
Was that in the original Jacob Study that we were going to be putting meters in on Main Street?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
It was.
It was?
It was an option.
An option.
Well, I don't recall the Downtowners being aware of that, but maybe they were, and Jim's here. I mean, I just, I think that's something that is worthy of a public conversation with those interested property owners and retail merchants.
Absolutely, yes.
Because right now, that's on, pretty much, on, you know, free parking out front of their shops.
Well, one of the reasons for that recommendation, just so you know, is if you got all this free parking around the new county garage, why would anybody go in the county garage? So, it's partially to make that project more successful as well, and generate the revenue that you're going to need to, you know, keep the program growing and enhancing and, you know, not be a subsidy.
I understand. And on the next slide, that's one of the questions I have, is first-hour free program in garage. I'm not sure why we would give an hour free parking in the garage when everywhere we have meters, we don't do that. And if we're going to add meters on Main Street, I would think would be inconsistent to have the first hour free in the garage, but you've got to have, pay at a meter on Main Street. So, and I've heard that also for some of the Campus Corner people, that there is no free one-hour parking in front of their shops. And, you know, I just think we need to be consistent. And if it's going to be one-hour free in the garage, it should be one-hour free everywhere, arguably, or everybody should pay for the first hour.
No. I would totally disagree with that. The on-street parking is completely different animal. You want turnover of those spaces because they're your most valuable, most convenient spaces for your customers, which generate business, I mean, profit for your businesses. So, we really want, what we want out of that, the short on-street system should be a short-term, high turnover, we should manage it for short-term, high turnover use. The garage is for longer-term use. So, when the employees say they don't have any place they can go where they can stay longer, or if you need, you know, three hours downtown, you have two-hour limits, well, what am I supposed to do? Well, the garage gives you that option. But, it might be a little less convenient. So, entice, to entice people into the garage, giving the one-hour free has been a very successful program in many places around the country. And what we found, and we, I mentioned the story in Boise this morning, where the, Boise used to have what I call an old-school validation program, where they, you were allowed to buy coupons at a discounted rate, significantly discounted rate. It was costing that system about $600,000 a year and benefiting about 12 merchants to any great degree. We recommended the first-hour free program for them because we thought that would be more, A, it's more equitable, everybody benefits, not just the 12 merchants. And it also encouraged people to come downtown, give the downtown association something positive to say about parking, you know, come downtown, the first hour is on us, kind of a thing. But, the really interesting thing was that four years later, when we reviewed the rate increases again, and we reassessed the first-hour free, what we found was that the average short-term parking length of stay, the hourly parkers in the garage went from 1.2 hours to 2.5 hours. First-hour free was getting them in the garage, but once they were there, they tended to stay longer. And the longer they stayed, the more money they tended to spend downtown. So, in addition to that increase in length of stay of visitors, downtown sales tax revenue in that four-year period doubled. Now, not all because of first-hour free, but it was part of a program of changes that really made a significant enhancement to retail businesses downtown.
That makes a lot of sense. Councilmember Scott.
Just a couple of comments, because I honestly, I'm thinking about it now, and I really hate paying for parking. I really, really don't like doing it.
Everybody does.
Yeah, I will, I will park deliberately, like at McFarland, and take a bird to campus so that I don't have to pay for parking. So, I really like the idea of having the spaces, the $50 a month and the $30 a month. I think that's really cool, especially if those could be like prime-time parking spots. But, maybe like on the upper levels of the parking garages, kind of like campus does it, those are free, something like that, so that you can still, you know, park, park at the garage and spend your money downtown, rather than, you know, spending a few, I know, it's just a few dollars, but just.
So, one other dimension of this, I mean, everybody does hate to pay for parking, and I'm not any different than you are, but one of the other recommendations, the one that, I mean, the idea that this maybe should evolve from a parking program to a parking and mobility program, or really be much more focused on the broad range of the transportation options, of which parking is just one. So, if we really want to try to get people to get out of their single-occupant vehicle and reduce traffic congestion and the amount of parking that we need to provide, which if we're going to have to start providing that in structures is not inexpensive. So, this whole idea of transportation demand management or transportation alternatives, and promoting that as a core concept of what our mobility program ultimately will be, it really starts to change the dynamics of what we think of it. So, charging for parking is probably the single most effective thing you can do to get people out of their single-occupant vehicle, assuming they have other options to choose from. So, that's just part of a bigger picture that I would like you to think about when we start thinking about things like parking rates and how much we hate paying for parking. We're really trying to accomplish other things as well.
I think another issue that we've talked about quite a bit, every time we've talked about parking, this has been reinforced, the idea that free parking is not free. Who's paying for the parking? Who's paying for it?
Somebody is.
Well, the city's paying for it. The owners of the business may be paying for it. And if you don't, if you don't take that into consideration, you never are able to change that, that mindset of, well, I should be able to park right in front, which we're, we still have that mindset in Norman, Oklahoma. I should be able to park right in front. I shouldn't have to pay. It also increases mobility, just by the virtue of the fact that the parking garage is over there and you have to walk to wherever you're going. So, and like you said, people stay, stay longer. So, I think keeping in mind how expensive that parking is to provide, it has to be kept up all the time. It has to be restripped.
It's expensive.
Yes.
So, yeah. Councilmember Bearman, and then Scott.
I guess I'm not, I'm not unfamiliar with a combination of on-street and garage parking, and I'm not unfamiliar with the first, first-hour free. In fact, in Burlington, Vermont, where I grew up, over the holidays, they would off, they would bump that up to two hours free, and really saw a lot of increased traffic in their downtown area, which had really struggled before they built two parking garages, one on east end of their pedestrian mall, which, something that if I could be queen for a day, we would have here in Norman. The one thing I would like to bring up is, you know, talking about the mobility and getting out of single-use gas-powered vehicles mostly, is I'd like for us to also consider having electric vehicle charging stations in the parking garages, whether or not that's paired with free parking or whatever, but drawing those people in as well.
So, one of the things I would just say about parking is, it is so multi-dimensional and so complex, you wouldn't think it's just parking. But, but the idea of, you know, offering free parking during the holiday season, that's perfectly okay with me if it stimulates more business for downtown and makes your businesses more successful and, you know, works for business retention and all of that. Electric vehicle charging stations are everywhere now. Even, I just saw, I mean, even parking systems are getting into providing bike-share programs or those kinds of programs, other mobility options. So, there's so many areas of the kind of nuance that you may not think about right away when you think about parking. But, putting all those pieces together in a very complex and comprehensive way is what really provides the benefits for the community. And then, the reinvestment eventually of parking revenues back into the downtown in ways that are meaningful to the citizens. Boulder gets great, I mean, they charge a lot for parking. They keep it really tight. They don't want too much parking because they're Boulder. But, what they do get credit for, aside from making everybody mad for paying for parking, is they do so much with parking rev, they, parking paid for the free Wi-Fi over the Pearl Street Mall. Parking pays for the maintenance of the Pearl Street Mall. Parking paid for the flower basket program. Parking pays $100,000 to the bid to help keep them.
Keep it up.
Competitive. So, yeah, I mean, you can reinvest parking revenues back into the downtown in very meaningful ways.
You have to be rich to live there, but Councilmember Scott.
That's right, true.
So, you touched on another question, which is the parking revenue. Is it going back into the Center City, the TIF, the bid? And then, the other question I have is, because I haven't, I didn't see in here, handicappable parking spaces. Does that come later?
What?
Handicappable parking spaces?
Handicap, ADA space?
Yeah, handicap, sorry.
That's just a given. It's a, it's a legal requirement. So, just assume that you will meet ADA requirements.
Okay. Well, then, and then, as far as the bid question goes, and those revenues staying in the area, that's just how that's going to work, correct?
No, you need to have a bid first.
Or a TIF.
Or TIF.
Well, in this particular case.
They wouldn't.
So, what we're suggesting is that you create a separate fund from, separate from the general fund. Now, you've got partners here. So, you've got the county involved, and you've got the city involved, and they both are bringing something to the table. So, the idea is, the recommendation is to keep all the parking revenues generated from parking in the parking fund. Now, what that, that doesn't answer all the questions. So, if you, but just not, just not putting it in the general fund for right now, putting it in a dedicated fund. Once you've got the revenue and you start generating positive revenue down the road, there are all kinds of options as to what you do with that. You just, so we would want you to leave it to cover all your operating and maintenance costs. If you're going to build a parking garage, it's highly recommended to start setting aside money for maintenance reserves because concrete deteriorates and it's expensive to fix. And if you haven't put any money aside, it's going to be a problem, and then it becomes deferred maintenance, and then it starts looking shabby, and nobody wants to go in there because it doesn't feel safe and all that kind of stuff. But, there are options for taking whatever positive revenue is left, and potentially, the county would have a pot of that, a piece of that, and the county, and the city would have a piece of that. And you could decide what you want to do with that. I threw out an option earlier today about what Rochester, Minnesota did. They decided, they didn't want all the money to go into the general fund, but they also wanted some of the money to go back to the general fund. And so, what they did was, they treated their parking facilities like if they were privately owned and subject to tax. In their case, I think it was like 19% tax. So, they just decided to take 19% of net revenues and put it in the general fund or discretionary fund for you. So, there are lots of options as to what you do with the revenues once you've got them. You know, we even talked about something called a parking benefit district, which is where a debt percentage of net revenues after expenses is, a percentage of that based on an ordinance would be. on an ordinance, would be given back to, say, the campus corner area. So the revenue generated in campus corner, say, 20 or 40% of that net revenue would go to the Downtowners Association or the Downtown Association, the Campus Corner Merch Association, to do whatever they want to. And generally, the ordinance specifies what they can spend that money on, so there are guidelines, but they, they, as a board, could make the decisions whether they want to put that in flower baskets or sidewalk repair, or, you know, a million other things that would enhance the community, not individual businesses.
I love that free Wi-Fi idea. That's, that's excellent.
Councilmember Wilson.
Could, could that, I think I'm hearing you say no, could that sort of a program be a grant towards startups?
It could, absolutely, yeah. You know, whatever the community needs.
Or something like that.
Yeah.
That'd be cool.
Councilmember Castleberry.
So, how do you decide, maybe we, we just decided this later on, I don't know if you guys touched on this, but how do you decide how much the city, how much is county?
That's a really good question.
What have you kind of seen, I mean, I know we got to, we'll probably work, work it out, but what have you seen kind of another?
Actually, I've not seen a situation where two entities like a city and county are jointly gone after this together, so I'm not really sure if I have any good examples to point you to.
You'll be the first in the nation to do this.
You may be.
Right, I like that.
But it certainly doesn't make sense for you both to have separate parking departments, that just doesn't make sense to me, Wilson.
So when you, when you, you talk about putting some money in the general fund, then you could do that anywhere, you spend that money theoretically anywhere in the city, as opposed to designating it for, hey, the parking happened in this area, so we're gonna reinvest, well, that parking revenue in, in this area. I mean, I'm not saying that, and I would love this, but I don't know that downtown parking should actually benefit east Norman or west Norman, there's, you know, but with the general fund, it kind of would. So I think if you're trying to target the parking revenues to enhance the area where you pay to park, you know, then I think that's where probably a bid or a park enhancement area would come in, that type of stuff, you know.
Yes.
A little concerned when you talk about we're gonna have this, and then we're gonna give some of that money to, to campus corner downtown, you know, we're kind of picking winners and losers, and we're kind of told that's not something we do here in Norman, so.
And I think that's.
We're gonna, if we're gonna.
So the, the other thing I would say is that the primary reason for putting it in a separate fund is because maintenance reserves are.
I agree with that, I, I think it needs to be a separate fund.
We have to do that, but, yeah. The, but the other thing is if you anticipate a second parking garage, that the city or the, the parking commissioner, whatever we're calling it, would be responsible for building, you know, maybe none of it goes back to, it just goes into the funds to, to build the next structure, or, you know, get bonding capacity to build the next structure, so.
Yes, Councilmember Hickman.
Uh, it just seems like there's probably a lot of details that, looking at this slide, that probably are gonna need to be fleshed out.
Yes.
Like, if you're gonna keep the assets and the ownership of each independent group, you're gonna have to have assets at some point in time, which might just be the revenue stream to do bonding, and, you know, I mean, I'm a lawyer, and I, I see that, and I think a million potential questions in structure of how that could work, and so I'm just gonna set that aside, uh, and ask the other question that I really have, uh, which is, I know you mentioned this earlier about, uh, neighborhood parking permits, and, and I know, uh, when we met with you guys earlier, that was something that came up. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, if we created a, you know, parking permit program in the neighborhoods, and that could potentially generate income, and how that would, could work, like, because we have, we have certain parts of our, the area, like in, I'll just refer to, like, the, the center city area, which is blue, and I, I can't remember what that is, it's something, uh, it's like, it's like the multifamily use section.
Zoning.
Zoted, yes. And if we did, just as hypothetical, anybody who's listening or watching, uh, did on-street parking permits there, um, you know, how would that work in this, and have you seen those kind of programs?
Absolutely, that would definitely be a program that would be administered through this program. I don't wanna bust your bubble there, but those programs do not generate a lot of revenue. Usually the costs are just set at a level that covers expenses, and it's something like $15 a month, max, something like that. So it's not a big revenue generator, but it's really there to protect the parking for the residents, if, especially if we put meters downtown, and everybody, all the people that don't want to pay for parking decide to go park in the neighborhoods, and then they get the neighborhoods all upset. So it is a management tool that will probably come into play here pretty soon, but it's not a big revenue generator, but it is certainly something I would see as being a, a program element.
I think that's important, because it, it would be effective just for parking control as, as, whether or not it makes money or not.
It is important, and it's, uh, these are pretty common programs, and.
And you see the permits being, where they're assigned based on the ownership, like, if you own the lot, you get, you can, you get first dibs to buying one or two permits, or if you don't, then they can be sold in the open market, or how does?
It's, uh, there's, oh, there's all kinds of variations on that theme, but primarily, it's, each household gets X number of permits, and they can buy additional permits if they choose to. The trend is to go away from actually giving them a permit, a hang tag or a sticker, and use the license plate as the permit. So that's, uh, and it's, and therefore, if you go with mobile license recognition, then you can enforce that more effectively, uh, going forward, but that's the trend in the industry. But, um, generally, it's just to give the people that are in their neighborhoods surety that they'll still have parking. Now, they don't own the parking in front of their house, although they may think they do, but a, a counterargument is, especially if parking is really, really, really tight, to say, okay, this is not your space, this is public right-of-way, we need more parking, we can't afford to build another parking structure, so for the time being, we're gonna make this, uh, essentially a, a 10-hour or eight-hour parking permit area that downtown employees could use at no charge, and that's not, you don't have to charge them. And, and the point of that is, and that's a whole different argument, that is, let's use the public right-of-way for what, if, for what we need it for, and if we're short on parking, we need more employee parking, we don't have any other place to get it, this is an option to consider. But generally, it's to protect the parking of the, of the people in the neighborhoods from interlopers, that's, so there's two different ways of looking at residential permits, but, um, but the, the first one is more typical.
Councilmember Holman.
Um, I definitely unders, uh, see the, the value of the parking spaces on Main Street, for example. I would have some concern that, at least right now anyway, there, there's not really the same demand that we see on campus corner, for example, where it's very limited, you can get $2 or a dollar an hour out of people, and all the parking spots are still full. But, I mean, outside of peak time during daytime, perhaps, and special events, Main Street, it's not hard to find parking at all.
That's true.
And, so, charging for something where there's no demand, I would wonder how that would work, and then, but it could in the future, especially for what we're seeing happening downtown, things like that. And the aesthetic of parking meters on Main Street is something, too, that we should think about, because Main Street used to have parking meters in front of every single parking space, and, you know, it's a bit unsightly, I would say, and for campus corner, they really interfere with the pedestrian access because the sidewalks aren't very.
Multi-space meters, the kiosks, you know, are another option there that you could consider, and it's one per block face, or eight to 10 spaces, so it's less of a eyesore.
Now, that's really irritating. I don't mind a parking meter, but having to go to find the kiosk and do that, but I, I would just note that the last three times I have gone downtown to go to have coffee or go to have lunch, I've had to drive around the block several times, and I couldn't park on either side. So I think we're quickly getting to the place where, maybe not right now.
Peak time, definitely, and to me, the one hour.
Just in the afternoon.
The one-hour limit that we have on Main Street right now is definitely a problem, because I can easily spend more than an hour having lunch with somebody, and, or shopping downtown or doing whatever, so I've thought the current setup is a problem, at least in my experience. But is there a demand yet to charge, you know, $2, a minimum $2, you know, an hour or one hour?
Would be $1 an hour.
$1 an hour, yeah. And, um.
Nobody batted an eye on campus corner.
I do like the idea of, I do like the idea of the parking revenue from the downtown campus or corner area, staying in the area and reinvesting in improving and maintaining all of it, so, um, I like, I like where we're going, because I definitely see the demand.
Kate had her hand up, then. Councilmember Bearman, and then Castleberry.
I was just gonna kind of touch on the kiosk point to kind of eliminate the need for those meters, which I've even seen studies on can very quickly and easily no longer be accurate in counting time on the, just the traditional kind of parking meter with the little, little arrow. Um, and so I much prefer the kiosk idea, you can change, you can change rates or limits faster, uh, although I, as soon as, as soon as the temperature drops below about 40 degrees and the wind picks up more than 15 miles an hour, I definitely don't want to be stuck at one end of a block and have to walk all the way over.
We'd probably recommend you also have a, an overlay of a pay-by-cell phone option, so when it's minus 30 degrees, you can sit in your nice warm car and pay for your meter and not even walk to the meter.
That's, that's the perfect.
Imagine it being the same as the Gray Street parking lot, right? Same system.
Some, yeah.
So is, okay, Councilmember Castleberry, and then Wilson.
Two meetings in a row, Councilmember Bearman, I agree.
This must be a record.
She is coming around, folks.
Or, or you're coming around.
Well, that's true. I'm, I'm either losing it or she's gaining it, we can look at it or we can look at it.
You've been employed.
You're working together.
Exactly, exactly. Um, I like the kiosk idea, um, especially when you do this, phone like that, because what I've kind of seen is, especially with areas where you're gonna shut free off for events, stuff like this, like campus corner for game days, there's nothing worse than seeing some drunk guy run into the parking lot, walk into the parking lot, you know, or you're walking down the sidewalk, and there's not enough room because that parking meter is right there. When you got tight sidewalks, that parking meter really kind of blocks that lane, so especially with downtown where blocks that offer, you know, art walks and like this, there's always times when you're there walking, like, you gotta go around. So I, I like to have that space open, I think it makes the city look cleaner, and it makes movement a little bit better with the kiosk type stuff, so I kind of like, especially those areas where you're going to tend to maybe close streets down for special events, and so.
Not to get into the weeds, but when we're talking about kiosks, there's three options. One is called pay-by-space, so you, you number all the spaces, and you have to enter that space number when you want to pay for it. The bad news with pay-by-spaces, you've got to have the spaces numbered, and in the winter, if you get snow, they can't see the spaces on the pavement, so you gotta put up signs, and that just clutters up downtown even more. Now you got, you know, pay, pay-in display is another option, where you walk to the meter, you tell it how much time you want, it spits out a little receipt, you gotta walk back to your car to the real paying. The good news about the pay, that one is you have what they call portability of time, so if you pay for space 1, 2, 3, and you leave, you're done. If you pay in display, if the receipt is still valid, say you paid for two hours and you only stayed for an hour, you can drive three blocks around and go to a different store, and your receipt is still valid. The best, though, and this is where the industry is going, is pay by license plate, so you don't have to have the signs, and, you know, it's a much more efficient of, system, the only, the only issue is that for people that are new to the system, they have to remember what their license plate is. In Missoula, when they switched to that system, they gave out little key tags, so you could actually write your license plate on there just to remind you, so it went out, it was kind of a key ring thing, but, but that's the only real downside of pay-by-license plate, that is the trend in the industry, that's certainly what we would recommend.
They just need an app, you can take a picture of your license plate on the app, and then...
And we see that OC, OC, it's got some areas down there.
Councilmember Wilson.
There we go. Let me hold him a hand, that's, sorry, just kidding. Um, I, I think, I support the kiosk because I think it supports emerging technologies, and what you're saying says that there's things that are changing, and the kiosks would be easy to take out and throw away, rather than a million.
A lot of places, though, are hoping they could skip the meters altogether and just go to pay-by-phone altogether.
Absolutely.
What is so confusing for visitors, just don't know what to do, because they're not educated, they don't know what, how it works in your community, and that's why we're still hanging on to meters for the time being, so.
Okay.
I would throw out that.
Councilmember Clark.
On the OU campus, they do the buy license plate, and if our OU students can manage it, I think our Norman residents can as well.
I do see the, the, the visitors, but there could be some sign, wayfinding signage, you know, whatever.
As a father of a student that's gotten three parking tickets.
Maybe not Robert's son.
Apparently, it's not that easy.
Yes, I will recognize Jimmy there.
Ten or twelve years ago, when we hit the Gray Street parking lot.
Why don't you stand up, Jim?
Chuck and I got to be real involved with it, and, and there was some disagreement between, on the control system at that point in time. Some of us wanted a very sophisticated system, the council members that, that didn't. And kind of the frustration decision was, well, we'll just be a great city, and we'll do you a favor, and we'll just make it free, which was a horrible decision. What we ended up having was employees downtown who had assigned parking spaces on Tonawall, who were filling up a lot on Gray Street, because it was a lot closer to their office. It, you know, it, it wasn't generating revenue, and it wasn't meeting parking pay. And the assigned parking space, no one else had the right to use it, it just stayed vacant. Uh, you know, then, three years later, when we finally got off of that, at that point in time, we had a, a council member that really wanted to generate the maximum revenue from the parking lot. Uh, and we were going from all free parking, to the suggestion was a dollar an hour, and again, Sean and Angelo were really helpful at that point in time, and it was, you know, parking will never make you rich. Parking is not the end goal. Uh, the end goal for the city is sales tax. The Gray Street parking lot was done at $0.25 an hour, and look at, at the restaurants that have emerged over the last decade downtown and are generating sales tax for you. That for the city's the end goal. For the county, I think, and again, it won't happen in a year, but it'll happen over a decade, we'll get to the point where we can do structured parking and it makes sense. The parking lot I park in every day by the gym commerce is exactly the same distance, literally, it's within three or four steps difference from my front door to the east entrance to the new parking garage we'll be. We're getting to a point where we can start redeveloping the surface lots. So for the county, that means we have law taxes. For the public, it means we don't have a sea of parking lots everywhere. We're redeveloping in an area that all the infrastructure's in, we're not having to add infrastructure on the Frenchtown, downtown core stays violized, uh, it just makes sense.
More development, more walkability, homeless.
And, and this will not be the last parking garage, uh, this'll be the first one. County owns the site totally, city owns the site totally for the second one, they've identified a third one, and the truth is, is the county owns a site for a fourth, we'll only get passenger rail. We're on a path here that, that works. If, if this parking lot generates 100 new office employees working downtown, you branch it up every restaurant downtown at lunch. I mean, that's, that's the goal for the city. So, I mean, Dennis has done his job wonderfully and looked at the hard costs and said, you're gonna have this negative year one. You can't go, we're gonna get this much in sales tax, but you know it's out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I add one little?
Yes.
Jim did a great job, I agree with everything he said, but just to add one little tidbit to that, because I lived through it also. When we, when we installed the kiosk, the pay-by-the-space, like Dennis is indicating, maybe seven or eight years ago, in the downtown lot, we went from a 90% occupancy rate to about 10 or 15%, the quarter an hour ran those people out. So a quarter an hour was our threshold, and we, and we hear that, oh, it should be a dollar, we, we agree, it should be, but it's not in Norman downtown, it's a quarter. We did the same experience in campus corner with the meters, and we, council had this debate, um, as to what the rate should be, and from the Merchants Association, they said to us, we want $2 an hour. Council thought better of that and went to a dollar, and that was it, that was the sweet spot, and it's worked really well ever since. $2 would have been too much, a quarter was not necessary there. So just in Norman, Oklahoma, just a few blocks apart, the threshold or the capacity for customers was a dollar in one area and a quarter in the other, which probably speaks to supply and demand, Dennis can speak to that, that whole business, but this is the reality of what happened, and so I think that's the other thing we've all learned, is that there's a different threshold and a different capacity, and I love the idea of, of, of excess revenues, I don't see that happening for many years. We don't have excess revenues, it all goes to the general fund, and the general fund, if you take it out of the general fund, you need to make it up somewhere else, because that, that general fund revenue is going to pay for our salaries and police departments and all that sort of thing, so that's a great concept, to have excess revenues, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry too much about that in the next immediate few years, that's not gonna happen.
I mean, though, what on earth are we gonna do with all that money?
Yes.
The expenses are going over there too.
Right. Councilmember Hickman.
Jim, I totally agree with you. As we've discussed, it's why I've asked the council include in the upcoming capital budget that we make the west side Gray Street lot that's gravel right now. That's not usable, that we surface, we, we pave it and make it usable. Because we are seeing the growth like with the Winston and the Jam and restaurants on west of Main Street now, and they need parking. And I shared that with council and I hope that we can get that done, get that funded because, you know, it's, it is something that we need. I'm not a huge fan of surface lots, but it's something we need in at least the short term as the downtown area is growing. I, I think it is important that we do explore our partnerships with the county. I mean, like I said on this slide here, there's a lot of detail and negotiation and legal work to be done. But I do think that we need to pursue that, that opportunity with the county and putting our assets of the city into that discussion. I will say that I'm a little more cautious about, I know you mentioned the university and, and them being a part of that. I think that's a possibility, but considering that their parking is a part of the CART program right now and they're cutting basically CART, I'm, I'm not, I, I think that we need to be prepared to move forward independently as a city and work with the county. And understanding that public transit is no longer going to be associated with the university. If it's going to be associated with parking, which I don't, I agree it should be or could very well be, then it needs to be potentially under another type of a partnership. And my hope would be that as a part of this parking discussion, as I've mentioned before, that we also can talk to our partners at the county about public transit and potentially looking at a countywide pub, uh, public transit system that would then incorporate Moore and Norman and all along the regional transit authority rail system. And then there's even more opportunities through that partnership to where there could become needs for parking garages and more along the, the RTA system and a part, and a part of that public transit system. So I think there's broader opportunities there. I see the county and others becoming maybe other partners in the university. Although if they want to, then, you know, we can have those conversations. But I do think we should pursue it with the county.
Just to be clear, I was not recommending that the university be part of the partnership, so to speak, but that's that we would collaborate with them on an ongoing basis.
Commissioner Stacy has to leave in just a minute.
Yeah, I was just going to say I have to leave in about five minutes for another meeting. So if you have any questions of me, I'm more than happy to answer them. We, to let you know where we're at, and you're probably going to get to this, so I apologize in your wrap up. But we did not take action in our commissioners meeting on Monday. And next week, our intent is to accept the study as presented and probably will be deciding on a representative to basically stand to the county if in fact we want to go forward to future discussions in regards to this.
Councilman, wait, I, I think Councilmember Wilson had her hand up and then Councilmember Holman.
I just have a quick question. Is there like a, I think that it would be cool if we could do a, like the turn pikes do with the pass?
Toll tag kind of thing.
Yeah, toll tagged. It'd be cool if you had a toll tag that could be used on the bus system and the, like all the multimodal tolls in the city.
There is a program in Philadelphia called OmPay, which is essentially a card that would allow you to pay for taxi and bus and parking and, you know, all, all the mobility options. But that's kind of been, those kind of smart cards are kind of fallen out of favor lately because of other technologies.
Apps. It'd be cool if you had an app for it.
Yeah, I mean, the apps are definitely a good idea.
Yeah, that's all right.
Councilmember Holman.
Commissioner Stacy. Are you able to say at this point, when you, when the county thinks you might get underway with the actual parking structure? And do you, have you, do you guys have an idea of how the structure will be used once it is constructed? Like half of it's for county employees and visitors to the courthouse, half of it's public pay parking, stuff like that? Have you guys worked out in kind of details like those? Or are they able to share it at this point?
So taking your questions one at a time, we, our plans are right now that as soon as that entire half of the block is vacated, that we will start going out for bid for demolition. We're anticipating that that's probably going to be around March that we're able to do that. So it's actually moving fairly quickly. We already hired, excuse me, we have recommended we hire an architect and a construction manager for our healthy living block. And so the next step will be doing the same thing with the parking facility. So it's moving along at a fairly rapid pace. As far as how the use of the building, there are some, Kim Lee Horn has given us some suggestions on that. And they, they make sense at this point. This commission, if there were one that were put together, would have say in that as well. So they would look at all the things you're talking about. So I think you've kind of lifted into the weeds on some stuff that recommendations will come back to you to look at in the future. And that's what that commission is for. So they would do the same thing with our facility and what makes the most sense financially when we look at the entire process together.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hickman.
Just had a quick follow up area. Commissioner Stacy, my apologies. Are you envisioning, I, I'm envisioning, and I just wanted to see what your thoughts are, that there would be potentially a commission, a body, sort of like the regional transit authority, they have their own board and people that, you know, make some decisions and recommendations. Are you envisioning that there potentially could be a, a group like that, a board of some kind?
Right, which is a recommendation by Kim Lee Horn, that there's a commission that oversees this.
And it would have seats from the county and the city representatives and the community.
Yep.
It's, it's on the one of the slides. What, what their recommendation was.
Page six.
It's hard to read. Mr. Thompson, do you have anything you want? It's as chair of BDAB.
Thank you, Mayor. The BDAB met this morning without a quorum present and reported a memo that Mayor may not be in here. But that group has seen the presentation through, from the, from the Jacob study through the Kim Lee Horn study. And we concurd with the findings that, that is, as you ask, that there would be a, a collective body that would include elected official members from the city, elected official members from the county, that would then look at the next steps together. And I think in, in our being this morning, there were just three of us present, but we talked about the, the, the need for ethics, you know, conflicts of interest, dialogue, and there are several pieces that are actually in the study. So, so not having a quorum, we can't give an official reference or official answer. But I think we'll convene again as soon as we can get a quorum together. And I think it'd be safe to say that to other members of that committee would go on with that recommendation of minority that we did at this point. Okay, answering your questions, everyone.
Any questions of Chuck?
Mayor, if I can ask one point of direction we would like to give, we staff like to get tonight from you is would you like to adopt this study at your next meeting? Which is, that's going to take a scramble to get staff to put that together? Or would you like to wait until January? We're thinking you might want to stay in on pace with Cleveland County and do it next Tuesday. That then starts the process. Once you've adopted the concepts and so on, that allows you to move on to the next steps, whatever those next steps council would like to do. But at least you have, you will have adopted the concept and we can move on from there.
So at this point, we would just be adopting the study and the recommendations of the study.
Sorry.
Yes.
Sean, I know this is technicality, but, you know, I'm, I'm all right. I want to make sure I understand. I know we've had this conversation before. Is there a difference between an adopt and accept?
Yes.
Yes. We've had long disputes about that, Councilmember. I, I referenced several that I've been involved in, the comprehensive transportation plan, the stormwater master plan, so on. But we, what the council has chosen to do is, is adopt by resolution. And then the resolution would, would contain any areas of concern you might have. Give you an example with the stormwater master plan, there was real concern on council that we were adopting the stormwater utility as recommended. And several council members weren't comfortable with that in two thousand nine. So we wrote a, a resolution that adopted the study, but only adopted the technical elements of that and none of the official recommendations, which is what I think you'd be doing here. So adopting the study doesn't mean you have to do that governance structure or charge two dollars an hour or any of that. It's just indicating that you've accepted the recommendations from Kim Lee Horn and ADG and that you are considering future actions on their own as you go forward.
But that was accepted later on. Subsequently.
What council opted to do with the stormwater master plan, they accepted it in two thousand nine and they came back and adopted it in two thousand eleven.
And I think that's appropriate from my perspective because there's so many issues yet to be resolved.
So you, we adopt the study and then we, in the resolution, recommend certain, more specifics about the, the exact recommendations. What we would do with them.
Or by, or by exclusion, you can exclude certain, if you're uncomfortable with a certain part of the study, you might exclude that by resolution.
Okay, we just accept it? Don't you accept it then adopt it? Accept it and just say, here's a report out there and we got it, we like it. You know, adopting it is actually following it, is my understanding.
I'll leave it to other folks, better than, like Chris and I to speak to that. I can tell you just from a, a practicality standpoint where we've gotten ourselves in trouble. We're, we're three years down the road and we're trying to figure out what you did and what you told us to do with the study. So we just need clear direction from you because we're going to be sitting here two years from now, building the next structure or charting the next rate. We need to understand what the, what the will of this council was in two thousand eighteen or not. Maybe you're not comfortable with certain things.
Adopting the study, even adopting the recommendations, it's not like it holds you to every single thing. So
I don't believe so. Mr. Bryant, I'd be able to speak to that better than I can.
And I may refer back to Leslie, what she said at the beginning. This is really just a strategic plan.
Adoption of the strategic plan.
Plan, it's just an idea of how we're going to move forward. So you could adopt the parking strategic plan. You could accept that final report. And then you could move on with, perhaps similar to what the county suggested, which was part of the recommendation, designating one or two council members as a representative to start the collaboration process with a representative of the county and see what the next steps are. So it's really just a path of going to the next step. That would be my request that if you consider it, that you also identify who that person is that might work with us in order to put something together that you would then adopt, if that's what you choose to do.
Test to follow from that, the members present in the BDAB this morning made that exact recommendation that these, this is a study. It can include recommendations that the next step is to work together collaboratively with the county. We, our recommendation and the members present this morning, our recommendation was that the county choose, you know, its representative to work with the county's representative, see what the next step is. But just start somewhere with that open dial.
Councilmember Hickman.
Then with all that being said, I'm comfortable with the city adopting it and I would just put my name out there as I'm happy to be one or the council representative as the ward four rep where this is mostly going to be happening, at least right now in the immediate time with the parking meters and Campus Corner and downtown and the, and the county's work. And having been in the initial discussion, just, you know, I'm willing to, to volunteer to help and do that.
Does someone else have a lot of interest in, in being part of it as well?
I was on the initial committee as well, so I'm happy to serve in that.
I guess I have a question for Dennis. How have you seen, is it, are you going to have a commissioner? You're going to have somebody in your office? I mean, are we going to have staff or, I mean, how, how have you seen these, the, the people on these boards? Is it, is it Mr. O'Leary? Is it Angelo or is it a council member? I mean, have you seen that somebody from the council does it or they, who, who is it?
I think in this case, we're thinking a commissioner and a council member.
They, that was the recommendation.
I just know which level you're, I mean.
The council person would be on. I might be perfectly happy to have both members on. So I think that makes perfect sense. So, and you can only have one, right? You can't have two.
It's my presumption because we haven't voted, that, that we will pick one commissioner that will represent and then staff and the term.
We'll do all the work. Okay.
Okay. All right, great. That's super. All right. I think that's, that's it. Thank you all so much. Dennis, thank you. And Leslie, we always appreciate seeing you.
Of course, I wanted to point out to Councilmember Hickman, your surface lot is on page sixty. If you'd like to spend some extra time with that. And through the stakeholder process, we know that there are recommendations in here that might give people pause when it comes to meters and whatnot. So we assure you, we've gotten lots of input and we understand that these decisions are not to be taken lightly. And this recommendation takes that into account.
And my understanding is we'll move forward with adopting the study.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. We'll bring it to you next Tuesday.
Everybody hates paying for parking.
My perspective is a little different. Washington DC paying sixteen dollars to see a movie.
There's a secret parking spot in Campus Corner where you can park for free from seven. Because the meters go until nine, but this one doesn't have a meter and it's only for loading. But that, that period ends at seven.
See you next time. Wow.
And it's always empty because you can't, because the parking meter There's a free parking space in Campus Corner.
I won't curse, I promise.
Okay, I, I'd kind of like to get out of here before eight o'clock. And so we're going to go ahead and, we're going to go ahead and move forward. On the transportation bond issue discussion, we've discussed this a number of times before. I think we're, no, I'm not going to say it. That always, that always
You're going to juke it, don't say it.
I won't say we're close. Okay. Mr. Holmieri and Mr. Lovardo are here to discuss it.
Thank you. We vote for seven, by the way. Getting out here by seven.
Well, it's going to be a lot speedier than I
We'll, we'll go quickly on our part anyway. So, no, thank you for the opportunity to bring that.
I think it's, no, it's, it's the same as our last discussion pretty much.
Right, we're, we're picking up where you left off about three weeks ago-ish. I'm just going to repeat a couple of things just to make it clear where we think we are. Again, we're moving forward in April second election with this discussion. And that would have council on adopting the ballot, whatever that ballot looks like on January eighth. So roughly a month from now. And I, I believe you are tentatively scheduled for a meeting on December eighteenth in a study session format to talk about the ballot, whatever else. We're just going to talk about transportation tonight. Again, this is the same map that you have seen last time, so seventeen projects. In the previous discussion, six were bond funded or locally funded and eleven were federally funded with bond funds. Same set of projects really, we're just going to mix them up a little bit tonight in a different way for the financial reasons. This is that, that list that we talked about last time. So the last time we talked, it was a hundred and twenty-five million dollar total set of improvements with about fifty-five million in federal share, which is about forty-four percent versus seventy million in local cost or bond cost, which is about fifty-six percent. That's, that's what we talked about last. And here's just what that looked like with the consideration of a stormwater bond program simultaneous. So we've been talking up to this point about a total hundred and eighty-five million dollars in possible projects with about a hundred and thirty million of that coming from bond funds in two different propositions on April second. So that kind of gets us back to where we were last time we talked. So as I mentioned last time, we, we appreciate the opportunity to hire an outside expert, Freez and Nichols. For many of you are familiar with that firm. They're a very fine engineering planning firm. We were, we appreciated going to them. There are many great firms that could have done this for us, but Freez and Nichols developed our comprehensive transportation plan. And they have also done the downtown Maine Gray Street study and so on. So they were a great firm to be able to get up to speed quickly. And the charge to them was to go through all of our cost estimates that I previously showed you and start from scratch and make sure that they were valid, that they were as, as good as they could be with all contingencies, land acquisition, utility relocation, design costs, construction management, all those things were covered. So they, that's what's been going on for the last, I don't know, six or eight weeks. I want to recognize Scott Sturts and his team who have spent many, many hours in that process with them. We also asked them to include a two percent annual inflation rate, fairly conservative, we understand. But that's what ACOG is using today when we submit projects for federal funding. At the direction of council, we also converted the Lindsay Street Special Corridor project into two projects. And one of those two projects now includes a very large stormwater element. So we've taken a stormwater project out of the stormwater bond So we've taken a stormwater project out of the stormwater bond program and moved it into the transportation program because we can get federal funding support, just like we did on Lindsay Street West last year. And then the last thing is one that you may not be all that familiar with, but this relates to an economic development, industrial development potential on South John Saxon Boulevard. And this additional $700 would be added to the 36th Avenue Southeast project because it touches 36th Avenue and it would be a new, I guess, local road, industrial road connecting 36th Avenue East back to John Saxon Boulevard as part of our local contribution to that economic development.
Which is part of Technology Place and all those, those businesses and industries in there. Councilmember Wilson.
Forgive me because this is, I, this is really new. Didn't we approve something in that area?
Yes, thank you, councilor. So you're, I think council's familiar with this potential. I don't know how much at liberty I am to speak to this potentially economic development project, but council last year approved about $500,000, I think, for the connection of Technology Place to John Saxon, which is the immediate need. In the interim, NEDC, who we've been working closely with on this potential, has identified a grant opportunity for Economic Development Administration Fund and Industrial Road Funds to, to take that project and take it all the way to 36th Avenue through Saxon Park. The $700,000 would be the city's local share of that grant application.
So would we be compromising any of the park?
No, it was always anticipated that there would be a roadway through there and the park has already started part of that roadway.
And tell me about, and this may be a little tangent, what, you got that little piece of sidewalk that goes from Highway 9 to the Saxon Park?
Right.
Is that, what, where is that in all of this? I know it's probably completely irrelevant to that $700,000, but.
I think I understand the question. The 36th Avenue project would have sidewalks on both sides, bike lanes on, on street bike lanes and so on, so we would, we would have finished the one mile of sidewalks from Highway 9 down to Cedar Lane. This would be a, a local road connecting 36th Avenue Southeast back through to John Saxon Boulevard.
While I have your attention, I feel like I got a, a little bit of a switcho changeo on my Cedar Lane project. I don't, I know you're about to hit that, but.
It's coming. That's, again, that's.
Watch my face, get really confused while you talk about that.
So again, this is after we sanitized the numbers with Freezen Nichols' help. Now we have gone from a $125 million total cost to $146 million. We knew it was going to go up, we didn't have any inflation, any of those numbers built into those cost estimates, so we have a much larger program, $146 million, but we also have a little bit more balance in the federal and the local share. So this is the, just the raw results of the cost estimate updates.
2%.
And the 2% inflation. So I'll finish this slide and I want to hand off to Angelo to kind of drill into the, into the weeds a little bit. So the results of the, of our work in recent weeks has, has again, taken the program cost from a $125 million to $146 million. It's taken the federal share from $55 million to $61, partially because of that Lindsay Street project. That's good, more federal money is good. It's taken the bond share from $70 million to $85 million. That's not so good because we have a cap, as you know, right in that 70, 72 million to stay below the levelized property tax levy. So we've got to get back to that 70, 72 range, we understood that. And this is where we're, we're making our recommendations to you and, and it was actually a little simpler in this option, this is one of many. You, council may tell us to go back to the drawing board now, that's fine, but this was the, the recommendation that brought us back into that threshold. And that is really two things. You would convert the Cedar Lane Road project from a total local funding to a federally funded project. We heard reference to that last time, probably, and that would generate 7.5 million in additional federal funds. So a big influx of additional federal share and a, and a reduction of local share. Do you want to take that, Mary?
I believe councilmember Wilson.
I might not see me down here in my red sweater. Okay, so I'm also seeing that that pushes the project out to 2023?
Correct.
So, and I feel like there's a likelihood we might not get that fund, those federal funds.
The opposite is true, it's the first federally funded project that we would apply for out, of this group.
Okay, if, if we were to add this into the, the bond, though, when was it to be slated to be on, when, without, it was 2023 originally?
If, if we did it just with bond monies, it would be in, I think it was first or second year.
So '21 or '22, something in there.
But now we have to wait for the federal funds, so that pushes it to 2023.
And then I have another question about that, and I may have asked it before, so sorry. Is there recoupment money for the Destons Landing or Walmart? Does that make sense? Is there money sitting there that?
There's no money, it would be a recoupment district that you would create.
You would get in hindsight, right?
None of that development happened, there have been no plats, there have been no, no dollars.
So let me see if I understand the recoupment process, and this is going to push us out to 715 probably, but, um, once those start platting, then you'll come back, that, that's when the recoupment happens, we would.
Well, you can't go backwards, so if we, if you go forward with this project, for instance, and this is in your plan, and the development hasn't happened, in order for you to get those dollars, you have to create a recoupment district so that when they come along with their plats, that might be five or 10 or 15 or 20 years later, then they are required.
Then they will participate in this cost.
You don't do that and they come after the project is completed.
So is that a direction of council or is that something? Okay, so this one single council person would like to give that direction.
Thank you, we appreciate that you would. That's been your general approach. You're doing that on 36th Avenue Northwest, you're doing that on 24th Avenue Southeast, you did that on 12th Avenue Southeast and you did it on Cedar Lane Road west of here. So council has always wanted to do recoupment districts where you can.
So then, then did the Walmart already participate in a recoupment?
They did.
Do you know what the dollar amount is on that?
I can't tell you by memory, but I can get that number for you.
Get that for me? That'd be great.
They paid as part of the final plat process.
Okay, I'm done, I think.
Anyway, again, this is just a suggestion and we're happy to, to go back to drawing board, but this was a big impact that we thought was reasonable and the project qualifies very well for federal funds. The other one, we have been in contact with councilmember Hickman on this, and that is to change the scope, which then changes the cost of the Main and Gray two-way conversion and instead making it a two-way conversion on Gray Street only. So not touching Main Street, leaving Main Street for a later consideration, but converting Gray Street to two ways.
Certainly.
And that takes, when we, when we reestimated the project, that Main and Gray two-way conversion now became a $10 million project, it would reduce that down to 5.3 million.
Yeah.
So if those two things alone bring the bond issue or bond share of this package, same 17 projects, and the local share would be 72.4 million, which we think fits within that threshold. So you still get all the projects with these two changes.
Okay, I'm going to take people in order and it's, and I'm going to let the people that haven't talked yet, councilmember Beerman, then Holman, then Hickman, then back to Wilson.
Looking at this project list.
Oh, Castleberry, I'm sorry. Holman, Castleberry.
I don't have a straight street it has, like.
Sean, am I to take this to mean that once the 2012 transportation projects in Ward One are complete, you're going to consider those streets perfect and not in any need of anything else?
You mean 24th Avenue?
Yeah. Other than that, I'm not seeing any projects in Ward One on this, so I, I should assume that you think that those streets are going to be all perfect?
Honestly, I've not looked at these by Ward, councilmember, to be honest with you. I don't, we didn't really select these by Ward, but I, so I, I wasn't aware that, we're not aware of any needs in, in that area in terms of major arterial roads, but if, if we're missing something, let me know.
No, I think, I think that answered the question there. Ward One's going to be perfect after our streets are done, I think that's the right answer.
They're all four lanes.
Yes, they are.
Well, you know, it's, it's all a function of growth and certainly Ward One will continue to grow and, and you'll have more needs. It's never, we're never done, but, but frankly, I hadn't, hadn't even looked at this in terms of Ward boundaries until that moment.
Councilmember Holman.
Well, the most immediate Ward One project I could think of would be Imhoff between Class and 24th, being four lanes eventually instead of three, or four and then three and then, anyway. My question is about the Gray Street cost. So Freezen Nichols did our two-way study just two years ago. And the total cost in that study was $5.8 million to do both Main and Gray Street.
Right.
Now Gray Street alone costs 5.3 and it's only been two years, so, and it's the same firm that did the study, so.
What's changed?
How did that change so drastically?
These two gentlemen are working more closely with that than I have, I'm just going to ask Angelo and Scott to speak to that.
Take a stab. That seems way off, sort of.
Well, they provided us a total breakdown of costs and it was actually very complete. And we went through and looked at it, we, we broke that down and of course, that was for the both, both roads to be done together at the same time. We took it down, we looked at what we thought would be left, just using those costs, just that section of Gray that we'd be turning to, to just two-way. So we reduced it, the prices did go up. I also don't know that all the additional costs we've included in this, for example, we've included 12% on all projects for, for construction engineering. That's a large cost we can set on every project. So that's a cost that we end every project upfront also. So all the projects, which we did in our cost estimates, that we supplied to you initially, so that's something that we made sure was included in all costs that you have seen at council in this entire bond program. So that's one thing that was added in that was not in that initial cost. And also, there's just a lot of different, there were some changes, but they, they did, they looked at it from a different viewpoint. It's obviously a few years later and they're looking at it in a whole different direction. And then like I said, so what we did is we sat down and, and I showed the work that I did to do the reduction. We may be a little conservative here on our reduction, but I think that it, it is a good number. But we also included all the engineering costs, all that construction engineering to, to complete the project. We looked at right away costs, which on this one, you know, is minimal. Utility relocation, so we made sure that we accomplished everything and we looked at it also, not just on this project, but on all the projects. Is there a private utility that we think left to relocate? Do we think that OGN has an overhead line that's in a private easement? That, these are things that, that we wanted to make sure we had a really complete program. So while yes, the cost had changed, I, I would have to really go back and spend some time scrubbing that original program, see exactly how it was, is calculated, it's been a long time since I've studied that one, and I could get back a better answer on that, but this was based on, like I said, the same firm, different group of people looking at it and their full cost analysis and that, that worked.
Different level of detail, I think is true, but you're right, there's a, this is probably the one that, that had the biggest shift when they went back.
It's just, we spent $100,000 on that study and for it to be the same firm and just two years later, for it to increase by such a high amount is.
The number is, you know, 12 years in the future too, so.
That too, is, is it costing so much because we're putting it way off like this?
That was one of my questions, but yeah.
Well, we're, we're adding inflation to each, at 2%, so it does add up pretty quickly. So that, in addition to the inflation from 2016 numbers till now and then in the future. So yes, absolutely, you're, you're adding cost to each of those that take longer to initiate.
Well, okay, so what I would like to see then is exactly, a detailed thing of what exactly would the Gray Street project be, what all would we be doing, what all, what is all this cost going to? I know the biggest expense, at least in the two-way study, was the reconstruction of railroad crossings and the double gates and all that stuff. I think that was, those were a million dollars each, I believe. So are we talking a full streetscape like Main Street, are we talking adding parking, angled parking? What all is this 5.3 million dollars go to? And I would suggest that if we're going to do it, that it should be in 2022 with the James Garner, that the two projects should be done together, is what I'm saying.
Yes, I agree 100%.
Because I think they have to work together and they should just start out from day one, working together instead of establishing James Garner and then coming around behind it. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. So we're happy to provide that, we've got, we've got detailed estimates on each, we're happy to provide that to council. As far as sequencing.
Councilmember Castleberry.
First question on, on the, I love the bit, but the recruitment district, that doesn't affect this cost or the timing of the project, does it? It just affects, really, it's, as far as, it's not going to speed it up, it's not going to slow down, it's just going to, it will reduce the overall cost.
Yeah, the reason why it's in 2027, that's where the Main Gray conversion project was and we put it in 2027 because we thought by then we would have the James Garner connection to flood in place and an opportunity to do the assessment of those impacts before we pull the trigger on this project. But now that we've separated the two, there, I mean, we could have done this and put it on an earlier year and since it's a, a locally funded project, you know, could go the first or second.
I know we originally did that twice, so are you still comfortable with?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, we wouldn't know the impact of Garner, of James Garner.
Right, right, right.
If we did it now, we don't seem to be as concerned because it's only Gray and not Main.
Yes, Gray functions differently, you know, Main is the one that goes all the way through and it has, has more traffic too, so.
Also, on those projects here, you, you keep forgetting to update my map here, 48th.
Well, that's one of the questions that we have for you and, and councilmember Scott, and I'll get to that here in a moment if you'll let me. Wanted to show you the, the, again, if, if this were the change that council directs staff to do tonight, this is the new number. So your program just went down to 141, that's a good thing, where it's been down in the total because of that reduction on Main and Gray. And you went up in federal funding and, and stayed pretty close to the same in bond funding. So now we're at that 49, 51, 48, 52% ratio of federal and local funding, which has been our tradition here. We've, we've really done well leveraging federal funds, almost a dollar for a dollar. And I found in my time here that voters like that, they like that you're advancing a bond issue, that you're leveraging other dollars in addition to their dollars. So this is the end result of what that would do in terms of the dollars.
How did Porter have to get cut now? It was 5 million bucks, now it's 2.3 million.
There's two Porters, I think.
Just put them out?
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, is that right?
Yeah, you know, this, this Porter streetscape project, that was one where our estimate was very high level. Freezen Nichols was able to look.
I thought you were going to ask about Cedar Lane.
Right. I did, I did the recruitment district on Cedar Lane.
That was all you wanted to ask about recruitment? Okay, councilmember Hickman and then Wilson.
Good work, guys. I, 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 I'm comfortable with this final project list and the work you've had to do to get it.
Because Cedar Lane's not your district. Just saying.
It's going to get done. It's, it's still on the project list.
Well, and, and.
Can I answer my question, ask my question first instead, okay?
Sure.
I do have concerns about the timing on Gray Street, I won't belabor what councilmember Holman and Castleberry said, but I agree, it makes logical sense to me, maybe we can save some money if we move it up from FY '27 to FY '22 because naturally, James Garner and Gray are going to cross. You know, people always complain when you just worked on that street and showed it down for, you know, a year, now you're redoing the intersection. It would be nice if we could do the James Garner-Grey intersection one time when we are doing both road projects. So if we can, since it's all locally bonded money, I would hope that we can coordinate those projects to where we're doing that at one time. And plus, it should save us money on the cost. Number two, have we talked to ODOT about Indian Hills Road? I see you have a $2 million placeholder in here to Matt move, to try to, I assume, accelerate that project. Have we talked to them about that?
Thank you, we have, have spoken to them.
They say that will result in it being accelerated.
I've spoken to the staff, I've actually spoken to the secretary, frankly, I just happened to be in a meeting with him.
Did you talk to him after I talked to him?
I may have, Mary, somewhere in that, in that recent weeks here. Very favorable reaction from all of the staff there to that idea. They don't see that very often and so they're, they're thrilled with that. Not to the extent that they were going to make a commitment to me, or I don't know that they could to the council either, but they were very favorable to that. I would tell you too, in our I-35 study, they see Indian Hills as a priority, it's all, it's the only project funded in their eight-year plan, so I think this does what you want it to do, what we want it to do, and that is to stimulate their interest in expanding that project to a full interchange. I don't know any other way to do it and, and I would mention too, on this project list, I think this list now has 19 different line items and one of it is because we pulled out that, that commitment to a $2 million from us and Angelo on one of these.
Yeah, it's, it's, they're bumped together in 2028 with Indian Hills Road.
I want to ask a question because I've also talked to some of my friends at ODOT and they seem to indicate that it's highly unlikely that us putting in some money is going to it's highly unlikely that us putting in some money is gonna really change in a marked way the prioritization of that interchange. It's already important, and two million dollars is not necessarily going to move it up two years early. And I just wanted us to make, to have that conversation or be aware, because personally, I would, unless we know that's really gonna make a meaningful change in the timing, I'd like to see that two million dollars go towards the traffic management center, because then we can really do some more robust things like, you know, the timing of our lights to address congestion, you know, other things of that sort that I hear about from people often. And right now, we're gonna be waiting to do the traffic management center until, uh, what year was it? Twenty twenty-four. Um, if we were able to do that sooner with all of the projects that we have in the pipeline still and the ones that'll be forthcoming, I think that could really help with traffic congestion to get that management center up and going. I'm not opposed to the Indian Hills Road, and I want it to be done as soon as possible, just wanted to be clear, but I'm concerned about us earmarking two million bucks that we won't know until twenty twenty-eight, near the end of this implementation plan, if it's gonna really move it up quicker. And if twenty twenty-eight is about when we think it would happen in the natural progression with ODOT, then let's, we don't, if we're not gonna get something for our two million dollars, then I think there are other things we can invest it in that would be helpful for the community. Number three, um, that's it. There's those two. Thanks.
If I may, Mayor, just on that point, I, I don't see the, the city council spending that two million dollars until you had an agreement. First of all, that was my thought, that, that the council would never allocate that two million dollars unless you had a, or us, ODOT was doing their share as you requested. So that would be a case where if, if you weren't getting that in a, in a couple of years, frankly, um, you could maybe reallocate that there somewhere else. The other part about the traffic management center is that with the two hundred and thirty or three hundred thousand dollars, we think we'll be eligible for federal grant funding for the remainder. So we'd rather use the, if we, if we can get that, we'd rather use the federal funds for that and save those dollars for another project.
I, I, I will say that I did meet with Mike Patterson, and he, I did tell him about the possibility of putting that in the transportation bond issue. I mean, I can't say that he promised that that was gonna move anything up. He did seem to think that that was good faith money on our part, and like, uh, Sean says, you know, we, we may or may not spend it on that. But I also asked him, well, then when could we have some designs for that? How close are you? And he said, we've got two or three right now, and, and I said, well, we're having a bond issue coming up, and could you have something for us? And he said he could, so. I mean, if I see a design of something, that'll make me feel a lot better. It's a big deal, it's a big deal. There's a lot of potential development for that area, huge potential for development in that area. It is really, really important. Uh, Councilmember Wilson.
Cedar Lane. Um, so we have thirty-six and, and I, I, I tend to forget that we have Cedar Lane and thirty-six as two separate projects. Are we thinking there that Cedar Lane, and there's a two-year gap because we would do one, that one first, and then move up the? I, I do have a little bit of concerns if we're connecting that road around that thirty-six is also gonna become a congested, and then I say we move the two million dollars up.
Yes.
And put it on my Cedar Lane project. That's my, my, my goal. But the other thing is that, I need to make sure everybody in here knows. I know you guys don't go to that Walmart very often, but that is the most dangerous intersection in the city. Is there anything we can do in the meantime? Cause it's not getting less congested out there. About to put a Starbucks in over there, about to put a, you know, like there's stuff going in over there, and, and, and houses and Nobles growing in that area, and it's just dangerous.
I, I agree. I mean, I've been up and down the list trying to say what would be. It, it isn't, I mean, and I can't see any of those that it is less important than that, but, but the council member is making a good point about that intersection. That's the thing that worries me the most, is the intersection.
Also, I had another question about that intersection, specifically the design. How much money have we spent on the design? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, that's fine.
How much money have we spent on the design? I know, just a ballpark is fine. We've done some engineering of this, of the thirty-six intersection in Cedar Lane.
I would say we're in the four to five hundred thousand dollar range that you've allocated or appropriated.
So one of the things I thought I heard you guys say during some of these conversations was that that grade would get raised significantly, like sixteen feet or something. Is there a, a way to do it without, can we just chop off those heels a little bit? I don't, that's the doggy daycare term for that, but, um, is there a way to do that differently? It's not so expensive.
The current plan actually does both. The problem is to get the safe site distances there, both as you're traveling along the road and coming to that intersection. So that hill that's directly to the west.
Yeah.
It's actually getting shaved off like six or seven foot.
Oh, my gosh.
And then we're raising the intersection that much, and then we're doing similar things as you go back to the north on thirty-six. So it's a combination of items that make that road into a safe road for what we're proposing it to be and for it to be out there. So it's not just as easy as taking one down or raising one up. It's actually a combination of both that gets us to the safe level of what we need to be for the speed and for the size and for the traffic that will be along that roadway.
We're also impacting private property significantly, so the more shaving or movement you do outside of our right-of-way, the more right-of-way you have to buy, and, and.
Is that more expensive than?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You'd be buying old buildings and so on and so forth. So there's a, there's a fine balance in there between making topographic changes and finding that safe point for the design, for road design. And that's exactly what the design process is doing.
And, and they presented multiple, like, they presented multiple options, and we went with the one that made the most sense and, and balanced the the impacts of the property owners with the, the safety and with the costs, and that's how we arrived at the option that we chose to move forward with phase two of the, of the design work, was based upon all those items combined together.
And not to get too in the weeds with this anymore, then I have already taken us, uh, water. How do, how, I mean, it seems like we'd have a significant water issue there, too. Is that?
Stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah.
Stormwater's a challenge.
I was just calling it water, but.
They are. There's, there's a lot going on there. Uh, they did identify there's gonna be a lot of special work done, especially down at the intersection, to get that water to flood properly. Uh, we did actually, uh, and I, we brought forth, they did ask for just a little bit of extra money, for a little bit of extra study, and to do a bit of extra design in that area. So yes, we're looking at stormwater as, as a major impact, and something we're definitely considering uh, with the design of the roadway and the intersection.
So I guess my question to follow up with that is, would we be able to pull from the stormwater bond for that? To bump that up higher in the?
Hasn't been identified in your stormwater program list, and it's not been identified as a, as a flooding concern today. We're, we're sort of creating the need for the stormwater improvement.
Yeah, we're creating the flooding.
We're creating the, the need, and I think you're already, if you do this, now again, this gets back to that federal funding option. You're leveraging federal transportation funds to do stormwater, like you, like you're doing on Lindsay Street.
Well, it sounds like you guys are highly professional at your job.
Well, and I, we understand that, we understand that the Cedar Lane Road project is important. Uh, we're happy to go back and look at.
It's the first, the first federally funded project that we are recommending with a list, so.
Maybe there's something in, with stop signs, stoplights, something we can make it a little more safe.
Consider it done, Mayor. There's, there are lots of things we can do on interim basis. Absolutely.
I think there needs to be a big hammer, too, that like whacks you, like, stop.
I think the dilemma that we, the dilemma that we're facing is this project is the largest, one of the largest projects in the list, and it is the most eligible for federal funding. So that's why we're, it makes up the biggest, uh, difference.
Oh, it, it makes all sorts of sense. That, that, yeah, it's just, it, 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 it is very, it's worried me the whole time, so, okay, I'll just try to take a deep breath. Councilmember Holman.
Um, extremely aware of the Cedar Lane issues, what everything that you're saying about it, and, um, a couple of things. So if we're moving Gray Street up to twenty twenty-two with James Garner Avenue, then I would like to see us look at moving the Lindsay Street Pickard Avenue to Elm from twenty twenty-nine to twenty twenty-seven, so it's in the same year as Lindsay Street Elm to Jenkins. I know they're separate projects, but maybe doing the corridor just once, and instead of saying we're tearing it up this year, tearing it up again next year.
It's federal funding issue, isn't it?
Yes.
This is ranking is.
Yeah, projects are, individual projects are, the federal funds are capped at seven and a half million dollars, and our annual take of those funds cannot exceed eleven and a half. So that played into how we, which projects we put in each year.
So because of federal funding, the two Lindsay Street projects can't be done in the same year.
Correct.
That's what we think, Councilmember. To balance all the other projects out, and, and again, we're, we're, we're speculating, just like we did in twenty twelve, that we're going to maximize our federal share in almost ten consecutive years, and that's,
Okay.
that's a commitment that we are making with you, along with the council, to do all the things necessary to make that happen over the next ten years.
That makes sense to me for sure. Um, just like I was saying, just if it were possible, those two being at the same time would make sense, uh, but I do what you're saying. Um, and then I would want us to think about the Tecumseh Road, Twelfth Avenue, Twenty-Fourth, and the Twenty-Fourth Avenue, Rock Creek to Tecumseh Road. Uh, those two projects being done around the same time, and definitely a worry six issue, but they, the idea of them completing that loop around the city, I think is pretty significant, especially for traffic on the east side and relieving, relieving Twelfth Avenue.
I think I would add in too, just to piggyback quickly on the Twelfth Avenue. Uh, that's the state highway, which we continue to have issues with for that reason, so I would love to see another option as that part of Norman continues to grow to facilitate access to I thirty-five and going north.
And the last question, too, is the Thirty-Sixth Avenue, Cedar Lane to Highway Nine. We talked about that bridge before, that's brand new, but is only three lanes wide. Is the cost of replacing that bridge?
Widening.
To four, or widening it factored into that cost?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott.
What's up with other Thirty-Sixth Avenue widening, you know, west?
Thirty-Sixth Northwest. So that is in your twenty twelve bond program, and right now it's targeted for beginning of phase one this time next year of construction.
That's what I like to hear. And that, so that'll be going on at the same time with Robinson Crossing.
That's correct. It'll also be going on at the same time as the Ruby Grant.
What you wish for.
Ruby Grant Park will also be under construction.
You're gonna get it all. Yeah. Councilmember Beerman, ask for this.
Um, so I, I like, I like how this is coming together. My one concern with, um, doing Gray and James Garner together is I want us to be really cognizant of what that's gonna do to businesses in that area. Especially after what happened to Lindsay. Um, so while I, I like the idea of doing both at the same time, and I think the cost savings could be great. If we're gonna be looking at a more extended timeline of construction, doing both of those at the same time, I just want us to be really mindful of what that's gonna do to area businesses. Because I, you know, they all struggle, and time of the year is gonna be really critical on when this, on when this happens. So I just, I just want us to be cognizant of that, not lose sight of that when trying to figure out cost savings here, and it could harm us as a city in other ways.
Great point. Appreciate that. I would just say that, that this is a concept, this is a commitment that certainly we wanna make to our, our voters, but things change, and, and there's a lot of planning and design and consideration that goes into things. Some of these things get delayed, some get moved up. This is our best, I think your best commitment to the voters, but if council were uncomfortable with that issue, for instance, in, in year twenty twenty-two, then you could direct staff to go a different direction, and that's what you'd expect.
I mean, the one good thing about all this is that we're getting more federal money. I mean, that, that's always a good thing. Councilmember Castleberry.
I did wanna point out that we are getting more federal money than this, and I think it's important of the voters that we, these are projected timelines. Not, it's gonna be twenty twenty-fourth, but I'm, you know, these are projected.
Thank you.
Cause there's a federal thing, you know, cause I get a lot of heat on, on Main Street, uh, the bridge on, on Main, because it was projected. But it was delayed a couple of years due to the federal funding, which makes sense. We wanna leverage that money, so, you know, it just happens to wash out the day we start on it. But, um, regarding the, um, the money on the, the two million dollars we had set aside in twenty twenty-eight. I, I'm gonna respectfully disagree with Councilman Hickman on that as far as the traffic management center, because we are leveraging three million or three point two million of federal funds by doing that, and adding two million dollars over there saves us two hundred bucks, or two thou, two hundred thousand dollars. And so I think the traffic management is important. It's one of the, the, it's, it's already pretty high up on the list. And I think we still need to make sure that we have that, and, and I also have contacts at ODOT, and I've talked to them, and I, and I feel comfortable that, you know.
If we're talking about contacts at ODOT, I think I win, just saying.
She lives with the ODOT person, so.
Ours are in Oklahoma City. My, my last comment is, is I think the two percent inflation for construction costs is not conservative. I think it's low. I think it should be closer to three or four percent.
Appreciate that. We do have a lot of contingency built into construction unit price, so I would just tell you, and I, I think you're exactly right. We debated this back and forth.
Look at the asphalt prices just this past year.
Yes. But I would say this, that there are conservative elements in all.
Okay.
I, I can tell you.
Across the board, then you're adding another layer to the top of it.
We've developed so many of these programs over the years, and we've not always hit the mark. I feel as comfortable as I do with this program as I've ever felt with a recommendation to a council. Um, I really believe, and you're right, that can change up and down over time. But I believe this will be one of the city's first bond programs, where you're gonna come in under these projections, and you might actually have some money to put somewhere else. Well, I, I just say that based upon our current twenty twelve experience, where we, we literally forgot, but we didn't include enough money in construction management and, and inflation and so on, and we're, we're doing it much better this time.
You know I love you, but you told me the same thing on Lindsay Street. I missed it by fifty percent.
I understand.
And a million dollars.
I don't, I don't think they said that about me. Okay.
Well, no, it was a conservative investment. It was a conservative number they came up with.
Okay, I, I think Councilmember Holman and Councilmember Beerman, did you have your hand up again? Okay.
Uh, just to follow, follow up on Councilman Beerman's comments. So I, I would want to know more about the Gray Street. What does that project actually include? I mean, I do envision a streetscape, the sidewalks getting redone, new lights. It, I, I envision Gray Street looking like Main Street, basically. I don't know if that's this project.
We're doing the whole, digging up the whole street, we're gonna redo the whole base of the street, all that stuff. But I would like to know what that project means, so, you know, if we're just putting in new traffic lights, and I don't see a big impact on businesses from that.
But that better not cost five point three million dollars.
Placing the tra, the railroad crossing, I know, will have an impact, for sure. Yeah, knowing more about the details, sure.
That's kind of what we think is gonna, we, this is really focused on the two-way conversion, but what we anticipate is the desire for more. So we, we have provided some contingency in here, because I, I think that's what's gonna happen. You're gonna want more than just a two-way conversion.
Yeah, I, I definitely think the streetscaping part is really, really important. That just, that makes such a big difference. People are finally really starting to notice, oh, wow, it really does look good down there. Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Hickman and then Castleberry.
Sean, I guess, and I appreciate, I got your email, really appreciate that, that staff support for our award bidding. So I would just say on what Councilmember Holman's saying, if you, if we can have any more detail, especially on these work four and work two, um, you know, projects, you know, just so we can, you know, I know like when we did that thing in downtowners, we had some visuals and stuff, so.
Uh, again, so this is just the sequencing that we, and we've heard the comments, and we'll do our best to address those, um, tonight. So then, just kind of the takeaways, um, are you comfortable with what we're doing here on the major changes? That if you, if you endorse that, then we're, we're pretty much in the sweet spot on the bond threshold. And then we've heard the comments on timeline. So just wanna get everything from you tonight, and go back and, and kind of get this packaged up in a final form for your consideration on the A three.
Councilmember Castleberry, still, he's afraid he's gonna get missed. Make sure that he passes it up.
Any comment I wanted to make, I, I keep getting distracted by, I have to, it's down there. Forty-eighth.
I'm sorry.
My map here.
I'm sorry.
Okay, talk to me about this.
Again, uh, you're right. It's an awkward, um, config. When we started this discussion a month or two ago, we were talking about four miles of Forty-Eighth Avenue, starting at Robinson Street and going to Indian Hills. Uh, that was gonna be two expenses, so we, we pared it down to two of the four miles. And the reason that staff is recommending these two, although we understand the reaction that it's, why would you have a three-lane and then go back to a two-lane and so on. But these are the two sections of Forty-Eighth Avenue West that are most development-rich. There, there's lots of development.
One and two. Phase one, phase one's already developed. That's what the traffic guard is.
That's correct, but it was developed before you had any, uh, deferral or trap or recruitment fees. And these two miles, um, you've got a great deal of, of deferral fees and recruitment fees established here. And if this develops the way the developer has proposed in their plats, uh, it'll be the most, um, largest, probably densest residential development, including a new school that we will have anywhere in Norman. Now, that hasn't happened. We agree that that plat that was approved three or four years ago hasn't happened, and not sure that it will. But if it happens the way the developer proposed it and the way council approved. proposed it, and the way council approved it, uh, we're going to need those improvements on 48th pretty desperately. So that's how we arrived.
But that's not going to happen in the next six years.
It, it may not.
Not going to be an immediate traffic problem between Robinson.
The good news is that each of those miles are roughly the same cost, so if you tell us as a council tonight to move it to two other sections, we will do that, and happy to make that change. But that's how we.
Since I have been so supportive of Senior Lane, I am sure that my council member in Ward Five is going to help me support me on this right here. And we put one project in Ward One, so I'm hoping to get something back on that.
Consider it done.
But especially, you know, we're talking on 48th Street, as we're, we're going to do the road dive, we're going to put the bike lanes in there, it seems silly, we're going to come all the way down Main Street, go all the way down 48, and then stop, to go, it just seems like that gap paving, so to speak, would make more sense in there.
Our only thought to that, I agree, I agree with your point, Councilmember, I understand the, um, the heartburn, our only thought was that these were the two, again, more higher priority in terms of, of current and upcoming development, and that the other two miles would have to be addressed, and maybe you would do that through your capital fund or some other resource, but if, if you're more comfortable with another, just tell us and we'll make that change.
Well, I think it also came up a couple of years ago when the fire truck got stuck on, on there, because the power line came down. The road's not wide enough, I mean, it shut, there's no, in and out, I mean, that shut that.
Yep.
Entire district out there, and so, you know, that's a very narrow road, you know, it says, a lot of bikes go on there, I mean, that's a very unsafe section of road, and it's got, and it's got some stormwater issues too, so I think we, I think we're getting more bang for our buck doing that now, and that development out there is, is not going to happen in the next seven, eight years.
Are you suggesting the 48th then from Robinson to Tecumseh?
I want one and two, Phase One and Two, instead of two and four.
Robinson to Tecumseh, and then leave Tecumseh to Indian Hills for a future.
Yes.
Okay.
Move that north mile.
On 48th.
Happy to just defer it for you. I realize that's several years out there, but.
As, as long as it works with the 72 million.
It does, they're safe. It's a mile, it's basically same cost after each one, we've got to go from a mile.
Roughly the same, we've, we've calculated all four miles.
Okay.
I will agree with that.
Well, it makes sense, happy to do it.
Okay, Councilmember Holman has a question.
I'm just going to agree with that, I'm, I'm very familiar with that whole stretch of road right there, and I've had a number of friends that have lived in the Rock Creek